Ladies and gentlemen, today being the eighteenth of August, we commemorate Vietnam Veterans Day. Today is the anniversary of the Battle of Long Tan that occurred in nineteen sixty-six. We remember the sacrifices of those who died and say thank you to the almost sixty thousand Australians who served during the ten years of our involvement in the Vietnam War. Lest we forget. Thank you, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting on Monday, the eighteenth of August two thousand twenty-five. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. And there is a link to the agenda on council's website. Item two, apologies, we have two, we have leave of absence from councillor Chong and councillor Darko. And we welcome back councillor Hunter, great to have you here councillor Hunter, again. Item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associate, are there any declarations? There being none, we move now on to item number four, which is the omnibus item, four point one confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the twenty-eighth of July two thousand twenty-five have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? If being none, we move on to four point two point one, the mayor's diary. My functions from the twenty-ninth of July through to today have been circulated. I'd also like to thank the deputy mayor for representing me at two events as well. Four point three, council workshops as listed in the agenda, four point four, tabling of petitions, CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor, no, no petitions tonight.
Thank you. Move on to four point five, which is reports from outside bodies. First one being the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority, councillor Walker.
Nothing other than to say we met this week.
Thank you councillor Walker. Moving on to Tasway South, councillor Warren, I understand you have a report to table.
Yes, thank you, there's a quarterly report which I've already forwarded to Ms Ellis. But I also wanted to just make a couple of comments because we've been reviewing the contained deposit refund scheme and early stages of that, I think it started in May, was it, so it's been running about three months. The take-up in Tasmania has been much greater than in Victoria when they started there, so well done Tasmanians. But it's also interesting to note that you can either recycle your own containers and aluminium cans take up about two-thirds, I think, of the containers that have been collected so far. And if you don't, if you put them in the recycling and they go to the recycling centre where everything's sorted, those are then isolated and then sold and Clarence Council gets fifty percent of the profits for cans that come from our recycling. So up to you as a constituent in Clarence as to whether you claim the money yourself or you donate it back to the council. We're happy either way, but it's great to see that scheme being so successful.
Thank you councillor Warren. Moving on to Taswater Corporation, I can report that as a member of the Taswater Director Selection Committee, that we will next be meeting on the twenty-second of this month for the candidate shortlisting meeting. And then the plan is to meet on the eleventh of September in Launceston to conduct those interviews. And I'll have more to report on that following the appointment of the successful applicant. Moving on to the Greater Hobart Committee, like all Tasmanians, I'm sure we'll all watch the first day of Parliament tomorrow with great interest. And once the government is out of caretaker mode and the date is set, I'll have more to report with regards to the Greater Hobart Committee. However, I can share that the executive officer of the Greater Hobart Strategic Partnership, the Greater Hobart Mayor's Forum, Joe Fennessy, recently resigned to take up a position in the private sector here in Tasmania. It was a pleasure to work with Joe and I take this opportunity to thank him for his efforts and wish him every success in his new career. In interim, our own Ms Ellis has very kindly stepped up to provide the group with secretarial support and our next meeting will occur next month, so I thank Ms Ellis, as I always do, for her wonderful assistance. And we'll obviously have more to report at our council meeting of the twenty-ninth of September. Moving on to reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, the audit panel chairperson's report as listed in the agenda, the cultural creative advisory committee as listed in the agenda, are there any more reports for tabling? Councillor Mulder, do you have a report for tabling?
Certainly do, I have a communique from the Australian Coastal Council Conference, which was held on the thirty-first of July and the first of August two thousand twenty-five, as I alluded to in the previous meeting. There's quite a comprehensive document which I'll table here. But just in summary, there's some important work going on in here which the Tasmanian government whilst in caretaker mode has actually issued a draft council policy. And I think one of the first things we might say about that council policy, that about the state government's coastal policy, it has actually no bearing on what the issues are that are contained in here. And the big issues that are contained in here are things like rebuilding for resilience after extreme weather events and a lot of that had to do with Cyclone Alfred and the work that's been going on there. Sustainable coastal tourism, which is something that should be dear to the heart of this council. And some of the areas, so short-term rentals is another particular issue that is covered quite well in this conference. And I think that I've been there for a while now and I've listened to it and I haven't spent ratepayers' money waltzing off to national conferences. But I'm more than happy to say that I have regular inputs at their meetings and that I would encourage my fellow councillors to actually read the full report, which the memorandum that comes from it, and the fact that we need to start building resilience. I know it's a dirty word for most, but we cannot keep retreating or pretending that we're going to just abandon massive amounts of coastal areas that have been inhabited as the impacts of severe weather and maybe ocean rise continue to do. So I would really recommend this report, that people have a look at it and thank you.
Thank you councillor Mulder, are there any other reports for tabling? There being none, move on to four point six, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the twenty-eighth of July, the fourth and the eleventh of August two thousand twenty-five have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you.
The weekly briefing report of the eleventh of August and in particular the appeal against council's decision
of twenty Loina Crescent, Monagu Bay, and that is that billboard or electronic signage that was approved by council at its last meeting. On page twenty-nine of the weekly briefing report, the eleventh, it says that DSG has now withdrawn their Tazcat appeal based on the potential challenge over the validity of the appeal. However, the state litigation office has advised that the state intend to make an application to the Supreme Court pursuant to the judicial review to challenge the notification of the application. Could I just seek some clarification in relation to that? Because it would appear that, well, it is stated here that the appeal was withdrawn. However, is that the matter will go before the Supreme Court? And is that being brought by the applicant?
Well, if you take a seat, I'll let the CEO provide some more details, thank you councillor James, CEO, please.
I might defer to Mr Marr on that.
Thank you, Mr Marr.
Through you, Mayor, thank you councillor James for the question. The department were the applicant, sorry, were the appellant, they are the ones that have withdrawn now the appeal. They are the ones that are now going to seek judicial review, according to them. And as I've said, any further correspondence, once we get some details of that, as it's a matter subject to litigation, will be dealt with under confidential cover.
Thank you, Mr Marr. Councillor James, anything else on this or other matters?
To the twenty-eighth of July briefing report, the appeal against council's decision at twenty Loina Crescent, Monagu Bay, and that is the electronic billboard or signboard that council approved at its recent meeting.
Councillor James, I think you just discussed that issue?
No, with respect, Mr Mayor, I'm going to raise a matter in relation to that briefing report on page twenty-six. And that is, and I just, may I seek some...
Sorry, which, which, sorry, which report, which weekly briefing report are we looking at?
The twenty-eighth of July.
Oh, my apologies, so thank you.
That's it, on page twenty-six.
Thank you councillor James, my apologies.
In that report, it says that the Department of State Growth has subsequently exercised their statutory right to appeal against the decision. That is for the LED billboard sign at twenty Loina Crescent, Monagu Bay. And it would appear that on the information that's shown in this report from the head of city planning, that these grounds of appeal, one, two, three, et cetera, are almost a cut and, or are a cut and paste of what the council officers recommended for refusal at our most recent meeting. Could I just seek confirmation as to whether or not these are a cut and paste that has basically been taken out of the officer's recommendation for refusal at our meeting on that date?
CEO, thank you.
Mayor, thank you for the question. I'm not in a position to answer that because clearly the Department of State Growth have set out their grounds of appeal. If they have used the officer's report as a basis on which to do that, that's a matter for them. But I do note that that is the appeal that has since been withdrawn and replaced by judicial review.
Anything else councillor James?
The, the appeal was withdrawn. And was it on the basis that council has, over time, always considered the landowners as part of an appeal process? But in this particular case, it appears that road owners or road users or the road actual infrastructure is not in a position to be able to make an appeal against council decision in this instance.
CEO, please.
In a nutshell, that's one of the arguments there. So the DSG argument essentially boils down to they should be treated like a landowner. But in, in, in the context of how that system works, highways, for example, don't have a PID. They're not recognised in the same way as other land is. So that's essentially one of the issues on judicial review.
Thank you councillor James, any other matters, councillor Hume, thank you.
The weekly briefing report of twenty eighth of July, there was a briefing on the rebranding of Clarence Arts and Events to Rosney Farm. And the branding looks fantastic, but I just wanted to clarify something. My understanding, and I could be under misapprehension here, is that Clarence Arts and Events referred to arts and events across the whole of the city? Or, or is it just, whereas Rosney Farm is a distinct precinct? Or am I under misapprehension there, was Clarence Arts and Events actually specific to that precinct?
Thank you councillor Hume, I'm sure Ms Coburn, position her at that, please.
Through you, Mayor, thanks for your question, hopefully I can answer it correctly. The consultants that we used for the design developed a really thorough review of all of the activities that Clarence Arts and Events, formerly Clarence Arts and Events, put out. And the Rosney Farm branding is still Rosney Farm Presents. So it will be Rosney Farm presenting not only activities at the Rosney Farm site, but all other of our arts and cultural events. And it's kind of co-branded along with Clarence City Council branding as well. But if you require further information, I can certainly provide that.
Anything else councillor Hume? Councillor Mulder, thank you.
Perhaps we should cut to the chase on twenty Loina Crescent. The question that really, that I would like to know is that, is the withdrawal of the appeal by DSG saying that the applicants can now go ahead and build it? Or has the whole appeal process timelines and process been put on hold by the Supreme Court action?
Mr Marr, please.
You, Mayor, thank you councillor for the question. That's a matter of the applicants, I mean, they would need to seek leave of the court to hold, to have the matter held in abeyance pending a decision of judicial review or seek an injunction on their own right. To date, I haven't got that information in order to be able to advise council of where it's going. We've only been advised that they are intending to lodge such an application.
Thank you, Mr Marr. Any other issues arising from the weekly briefing reports? There being none, I note that we're now at the end of our omnibus items, may I have a mover and a seconder, please? Thank you, moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Goine, all those in favour? And that's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item five, which is public question time, there are some questions on notice, CEO, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we have a number of questions on notice tonight. The first two questions are from Mr Thomas Chick of Mornington. Mr Chick's first question is, I'm very pleased to see the old Charles Darwin Trail signposts in Waverley Flora Park replaced with sturdy affair. Unfortunately, some weeks later, the new posts are as yet unadorned. What does council intend, when does council intend to attach the new signage to the posts? The answer to that question is that council is currently awaiting proofs from its supplier of the wayfinding signs to be installed in Waverley Flora Park. Once the signage has been finalised, it will be installed without delay. Second question is, is council aware of the, that the contact forms on the new website use an incorrect American phone number format? And does it intend to resolve this issue? The answer to that question is that the contact form is set to international. This is intentional as it is enabled to work when inputting any phone number. Mr Chick is referring to a different form, he's encouraged to contact council officers to assist in exploring further. Currently, this is all we can advise, working from the limited information provided. Our next two questions come from Ms Janice Overett of Rokeby. And Ms Overett writes, in February twenty twenty-five, councillor Ritchie submitted the survey results of her hard waste survey to Clarence Council, which had a high rate of Clarence residents wanting the service restored. Many residents, forty-one percent, were also in favour of a bookable service. Currently, there is no service available and makes it very hard and expensive to have large items removed, especially for the elderly and families with no trailer or other means of disposing large unwanted items. Ms Overett's questions are, when or is council going to act on the recommendations of the survey? And two, will a hard waste service be restored? The answer to that question is as follows. Firstly, to be clear, the hard waste survey was carried out independently by councillor Ritchie and was not a council initiative. During this past year, council, together with three other southern councils, engaged a consultant through the regional authority Tasway South to conduct a benchmarking and feasibility study to explore whether and in what form a contemporary hard waste service could be delivered in our region. The study concluded that reinstating a hard waste collection service was not feasible for the region or for Clarence individually. Key reasons included the unavailability and unwillingness of suitable service providers, poor environmental outcomes and associated environmental and human health risks. The report instead recommended alternative approaches better suited to Clarence, such as further targeted collection events, for example, the tyre amnesty successfully held in May twenty twenty-five. Council officers are currently prioritising initiatives to address bulky and difficult to recycle items, such as mattresses, tyres and soft plastics. A tip voucher scheme is also being investigated as an alternative to hard waste collection, which is no longer feasible for the reasons just indicated. We hope to have further updates on these initiatives soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, CEO. Moving on to five point three, answers to previous questions, take your notice, listed in the agenda. Five point four, questions without notice, are there any questions from the gallery this evening? There being none, we move now on to item six, deputations by members of the public, are there any deputations?
Thank you, Mayor, no, there are no deputations listed tonight.
All right, well, thank you very much, moving now on to item number seven. I'm sorry, so you have to register to make a deputation? I'm happy to engage you via email, just to set out, the rules are available on the website. Provide your name and your suburb, you may have three minutes, but I just urge that if this has anything to do with a legal matter or enforcement matter, I will rule it out of order because it's not appropriate for that to be heard or discussed in open council. All right, you may have three minutes, but I will watch this very carefully, thank you, Mr Walker. Name and suburb, please.
B J Walker of Hara. Before I start this deputation, I inform that I am not here reading this for myself alone, but for the many residents I feel and know have been affected and unable to stand up for themselves for so many varying reasons. The Clarence City Council either has no intention, oh no, sorry, has no internal procedures when dealing with general compliance issues or they do not include general fairness, communication, evidence and resolution in them. Rather, this council seeks to continue its longstanding workplace culture of bullying its residents into submission by hiding behind its letters, officers, lawyers and threats of legal proceedings to alienate its victims.
Mr Walker, I'm sorry, we have to stop you there, this is not a forum to come in here and defame council or council staff, please take your seat. No, no, I'm very sorry, sir, I cannot allow, as if your protection is well, I cannot allow this type of deputation to continue in an open forum like this. I'm happy to talk, I'm happy to talk with you, one-on-one, I'm very sorry, this has been broadcast, privilege does not apply in this chamber. This is for the benefit of you and also our staff, so please take a seat, sir.
Can I ask for any more grounds at some date, please?
We will write to you, Mr Walker, and set, very clearly set out those guidelines. All right, moving now on to item number seven. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety-three. First item being seven point one, the planning application for thirty-nine Karajong Street, Mornington, seven classrooms and associated decking, signage and partial demolition. I'll call for a mover, thank you councillor Walker, and a seconder, please. Councillor Hume, thank you, councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's all pretty well set out in the agenda item. And you'll notice that there are, if you read the actual recommendations, it's not just simply that council approve it, there are a number of matters that we are requiring further, further work on, including the building surveyor and elements around matters such as stormwater. This application refers to a site, a previous state school site that has now been McKillip for quite some time, a school that has now also gone from being seven to ten to seven to twelve, and that is a large reason for what we have before us. It is a choice that is really appreciated by lots of people to educate the children on the eastern shore alongside the other schools that we have. I believe that the application has tried to do a thorough job dealing with the constraints they have and the challenges they face. And I won't keep rambling on, just to say that I support the officer's recommendation and I encourage my colleagues to do likewise.
Thank you councillor Walker, councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor, couldn't add much more to that, this is a fairly straightforward application. It doesn't increase the capacity of classrooms in any way, therefore doesn't have any impact on, impact on traffic. The main issue is, is the setbacks, it doesn't comply with the acceptable solution, therefore the performance criteria are invoked. It is noted in the report that there are some site constraints. But, you know, the issues in terms of the setbacks, the applicants have proposed to deal with that through some screening and the classrooms will be more modern and better looking than the old ones, so.
Thank you councillor Hume. Deputy Mayor, you don't have a conflict of interest here, do you? Where does your daughter go to school?
Not in Killip College.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, although I must say my son was a previous student at McKillip College and indeed I am a former student of the former Mornington Primary School that operated at that site. So I've had a long-running interest to see the development of that site since it was taken away from the state school system and has become a part of the Catholic education system. Without going into too much history, I think it's a shame that back in the...
Deputy Mayor, you don't have a conflict of interest here, do you? Where does your daughter go to school?
Not in Killarney College.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you, although I must say, my son was a previous student at McKillop College and indeed I am a former student of the former Mornington Primary School that operated at that site. So I've had a long running interest to see the development of that site since it was taken away from the state school system and has become a part of the Catholic education system. Without going into too much history, I think it's a shame that back in the day, we got rid of places like Moraine High School and Mornington, and now we see them filling back up again. So, great to see it's expanding. I've got no particular issue with the proposal, only to say that I think it's a bit of a shame that we're seeing a situation where previously approved temporary structures are being replaced with structures that are also not designed to be permanent in the long term. So these will also, if depending on how the master planning continues with the Catholic education system, and I'm not sure I'd want to be paying the bill to redevelop all over again and then all over again later. So that's a matter for them, but one that raises eyebrows for me in terms of their planning. But nevertheless, not germane to the consideration. But I can understand why some people are a bit confused in the community about what's happening and when. But I'm quite comfortable with what they're doing and it's great to at least see some improved facilities on the way for the students. And I look forward to the longer term planning coming to fruition and I support the recommendation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? There being none, councillor Walker, write a reply? Thank you. So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much colleagues. Moving now on to item 7.2, which is a planning application for 73 Kayuta Road, Rose Bay, two lot subdivision. Is there a mover please for this motion, for this recommendation? Thank you councillor Mulder. Is there a seconder? Councillor Hume, thank you. Councillor Mulder.
Once again, a straight, a fairly straightforward one, except I think the big issue here, as can be seen by the multitude of diagrams and stormwater issues, I think the big lesson here, and it's too late for here, but it's something we really do need to bear in mind as we go along, is watercourses should be open spaces and should not have houses built on them. And the watercourses really do need to be left open, they form a number of functions. Of course, they're a place where, when you get severe weather events, and we're going to see more of those as time goes by, that these need to be open and free spaces. They also act as wildlife corridors between the coast and the hinterland that lives behind them. So as we go into further greenfield development, there's a signature lesson here. Do not build your house on a creek or a swamp. So, I'm happy to see this one.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Hume?
As per the officer's report.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution here? Councillor Walker?
Yes, thank you Mayor, I support the proposal, noting that at over 450 metres squared, it is positively spacious by today's subdivision standards.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues? Councillor Mulder, there may not have been, oh, there is, all right, write a reply please.
Just wondering whether they are aerial acres or actual physical acres.
No, I would recommend.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that the planning application be approved, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Unanimously going, thank you very much colleagues. Let's see if we can keep this going. Eight points, now to automate, 8.2 Asset Management. 8.2.1, the draft coastal access strategy. Call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Councillor Mulder, thank you. Is there a seconder? Deputy Mayor, thank you. Councillor Mulder.
Observations are, is an excellent strategy. As said at workshops and previous things, is, it's really good to see that with this particular strategy, what we're doing is we're putting some priority around which beaches need to be accessed and when and how. My observations, and I've made this before, is that primarily the report seems to be about beach access. When in fact coastal access is much wider than that. And I, and I take a particular point, as I've mentioned before, a lot of the rocks areas around the city are used for people swimming and diving and things like, and fishing. And I think we need to also get the fact that some of those areas, although they're very popular, their access to them is quite, is quite dangerous. And I take particular reference to Belarive Bluff, where on the Hara beach side are the old dinghy davits. They're still there, that used to be for the rescue boat in the old days, and a lot of people go down there and swim. Yet to get to them, you either walk along at high tide, a very treacherous rocky foreshore, or you have to climb over a council fence and go down a very scrubby road. And I'd, and I'd like to see that, if we're going to do something called a coastal access, we would extend it to having a look at some of the accesses to these beaches, to these non-beach areas. The other point that I've made, and I'll make some time, is that if you look at the report and, and we on council have some highly qualified and excellent members of staff who are actually qualified landscape architects. Yet we feel we need, and these are the people who go out and they are actually the ones that hold the community consultation sessions. And the consultants bring all this information together and put it into what is a very effective and a very professional report. But that costs us $200,000 and I'm just wondering whether that is an appropriate use of ratepayers' money when the skillset exists within the council. And I think we've all seen the email we got today and we can understand somehow the other arrangements. But I would like to see that, that all the work that our staff put into these reports is actually done with a lot less of the consultant dollar, which is simply, which I think is basically bringing all the council staff together and dressing it up into a, what is a professional report? They're the only two observations, but of course, how can you not endorse a strategy? And that's what I recommend you do.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Just for the benefit of the general public, the skillset required is clearly not just limited to landscape architects, it's quite an extensive body of work. So just so that we've got that clarified. Councillor, Deputy Mayor, seconder please.
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor, and it is a good report. I look forward to the feedback that we will receive from the community and the future workshops that we will have in respect of that feedback. It may be that some of the issues raised by councillor Mulder will bear out in some of the feedback that we receive in relation to the draft strategy. And of course, I think had, had our council staff been able to manage it all in-house, then I'm sure that they likely would have been able to, elected to do that. Acknowledging the email that we received this afternoon, I understand the questions and it's prudent and appropriate to put checks and balances on when, where and how we use consultants and the cost of those things. But I appreciate the advice that was provided this afternoon in relation to the answers around those questions. And as I said, I look forward to the community feedback that we get in relation to the draft and happy to support recommendation and seek colleague support.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor James, please.
Thank you. The, it may assist councillor Mulder if I refer him to the Coastal Access Strategy Two and 1.2 Study Area. In the second paragraph, two thirds of the way down, the Coastal Access Strategy applies to the entire coastline and will interact with all projects on or near the coast. So I think this is a good policy because it is actually looking at the entire coastline and that by the very nature means it will interact with all projects on or near the coast. The other comment that I'd like to make and is still on the same page, Coastal Access Strategy Two, it says here, and I quote, "The study area includes coastal areas managed by the city of Clarence and coastal areas managed by other governmental departments. Whilst the strategy discusses opportunities for improvement at locations not managed by council, the focus of the strategy is on the coastal areas managed by the city of Clarence", unquote. So my question is to the appropriate officer, has it, has said that the focus of the strategy is on the coastal areas managed by the city of Clarence? And also it has been described that there are other agencies involved as well. Does the strategy include any discussion or any feedback with any of those other coastal management areas by Crown and by Parks and Wildlife?
So that was a question councillor James?
Yes, it was.
Mr Graham or Miss Weeks? Who would like, Mr Graham, please?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we've certainly had discussions with the departments in terms of informing this. But a part of the consultation will be certainly to reach out to the departments. And in terms of other beaches where it's managed by other parties, at least our strategy will be clearly identified to them and we would assume that we would be a stakeholder in relation to if they're planning any projects or works on their land. And we're abutting to it, that we can provide them with one of the key principles that we see in that area as well.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Councillor Goine, thank you.
Thank you. As always, a very interesting read and a topic dear to my heart. May I ask, through you, Mr Mayor, it says here that dogs and horses are outside the scope of this report. Whereabouts horse accesses fall into the scope of which report?
Thank you councillor Goine. Mr Graham?
Well, certainly in terms of dogs and horses, well certainly dogs for examples, would be managed through the dog management policy, which we understand we're sort of doing a review this year.
Thank you. Councillor Goine.
Specifically horses, because we continually seem to be missed out and I'd like to know where they fit into it.
Mr Graham, are you able to provide any further detail?
No, but I'll certainly answer that one through, further through a weekly briefing report.
Thank you very much. Councillor Goine.
Say that through every report and consultation process we go, as a horse rider, we continually keep getting locked out, forgotten. We don't seem to have a place in any plan or consultation or anything I can find. And I will note that some of these accesses, of all the beaches we have and beautiful beaches in Clarence, there are probably two that are still safe for horse riders and even then I'd argue they're safety. I certainly, since having a child, haven't felt safe riding my horse on either of them of late. I really ask that we be considered somewhere, because again, it has dog and horse access and there's, in amongst all the points with dogs, we have, provide more locations for horse access is kind of in there as an aside. And it's a continual concern for me. And unlike dog walkers, my life's at risk if we don't provide safe access. And as a true multi-user, I ride bikes, I have a pram, I have mobility issues, I walk and I horse ride. I really urge that we start considering horses until before there is a fatality. There are a lot of aspects of this that concern me as a horse rider and some person, a person with some mobility issues. And whilst I enjoy community consultation, I think it's really important to consult some stakeholders like the Tengara Recreational Trails, which aren't included in these so far. And as a member of those, I look forward to hopefully consulting further on this topic with them as this progresses. Thank you very much.
Councillor Goine, thank you as always for your contribution, of course. This is something that you'd be able to feed into this process. So then does become part of the strategy and is addressed by the authors of the report in the next iteration, but thank you very much. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, this is the start of the process, not the end. It's us saying, here's a draft document, taking it to the community to get their thoughts. Yeah, we are, we are geographically blessed with our coastline. And it does provoke some challenges, but also this is about really helping with utilisation. And I hope accessibility for many people is a focus, because I think we've made a really good start in Belarive, but we need to sort of build on it. And also, I think for some people, there has been a focus towards beach, but as has been mentioned, this is a coastal policy. And I'll be strongly encouraging residents that take an interest in the track through to Shag Bay to express the feedback they've been providing to me. It has been good to see a track upgrade, that has, if you like, moving towards making it much more straightforward and logical for people, if you like, trying to get through to East Riston. However, unfortunately, in the process of, if you like, a track upgrade, regular users have expressed disappointment around the fact that the old access to the area of the bay, if you like, the southern end of the bay or the closest to Gilston Bay is now harder to access as that old track has been overtly blocked with trees, with signage saying track closed. So I'm hoping that feedback will come through to that, because that access is, you don't have to take away one access when you put in a new access. You can nudge, you can suggest, you can guide people to take the new access, but it shouldn't be at the cost of a really well utilised and quite desired way forward to get down to that part of the bay. So on with the process, I say.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Before I call on councillor Mulder, I'll enter the debate as a councillor and as a mayor and just address a few issues that have been raised. The first one being that the consultants have been, well, they're there to speak to the reports that they have informed, and then they use that feedback to work into the next iteration. Also, while there's, well councillor Mulder makes a really good point. We have some fantastic in-house skill, some great skillsets amongst our, amongst our officers. But quite simply, we don't have the resources to keep up with the demand. As we all know, we're growing at a great rate, they're not, this city. We're over 64,000 people now and we will continue to grow and there'll be increasing demand on us to maintain facilities in our city for our residents. Finally, the $200,000 that was referenced is not solely for the consultation. It's delivered the project in its entirety. And I think it's important, just for the public record, that that point is made. But with those few comments, councillor Mulder, you write a reply please.
Thank you Mr Mayor, and we can agree to disagree on some of the points we make. In regards to Alderman James's contribution, can I just point out, if you go to the section, and you don't have to go further than the contents page, to see that there were 17 site opportunities for land which is unmanaged by council. And there are seven more which are site opportunities for coastal areas managed by others. So there has been that consultation with the state government and there has been the work on our particular reserves. And to make my further point is that of those 24, all bar one of the site opportunities, and the strategy is about the opportunities to enhance access, they're all beaches, except for one which is the Atago Bay Lagoon Reserve, which, you know, is probably an internal beach, not an external beach. So I'm simply, so my point is here, that the site opportunities are all about beaches at this point in time. And to be a proper coastal access strategy, we need things like Shag Bay, we need things like the Belarive Bluff, we need the piece of land off Cleve Court, where people go and swim and they have their picnics and their barbecues, even if we're not allowed to build a track to them. But those areas there are all part of the access to the broader coast. So I'll, I'll just take the comments of councillor James on board and point out that at this stage, the study is beach focused and it's beach focused on both, on both council and land managed by others. So with that, but I do commend the strategy and it is stage one. And I'm hoping that some of the issues that I have raised and that others have raised, like councillor Walker, that they get, we have another good look at those.
Thank you councillor Mulder. The recommendation to the chair is that council approve the release of the draft of the city of Clarence Coastal Access Strategy 2025 for community consultation and authorise of the CEO. and authorised the CEO to coordinate community consultation to obtain feedback on the draft coastal access strategy and report that consultation outcomes to a future council workshop and meeting. I'll put that, that motion, all those in favour. National unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to, um, governance at, uh, at eight, eight point four point one. The quarterly report, um, to thirty June two thousand twenty-five has been circulated. I'll move for a, um, a mover, the recommendation, that is, that the quarterly report be received. Is there a mover, please? Don't all jump at once. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Is there a seconder? Deputy Mayor, thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor, as per the recommendation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Likewise, um, as per the officer's recommendation. And, um, if I might say, I found this quarterly report to be particularly, uh, informative and, uh, the format very easy to read, so I commend officers, um, on putting it together.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor James?
Thank you. Um, the, uh, reference to the Bayview Secondary College.
What page are you on, please, councillor James?
Yes, I shall provide that page number. Oh, yeah, page four, thank you.
Four, thank you, yep.
Uh, page four, there it is, yes, the base. Uh, it refers to the, um, situation where the state government has provided eight million dollars towards the project. And that's been committed by the state government. And also to, there is a, a reference that the state, federal and local governments will be making a contribute, a contribution of, um, twenty million dollars each as part of the sixty million dollar regional sports and education precinct at Bayview Secondary College. So my question is, um, how are we progressing with this, given that a lot of the work has been done? It is, I suppose, at that stage of being, can I say shovel-ready? Because of the nature of this project. So where are we at with this? And is the federal government considering making a contribution?
Yeah, councillor James, thank you. I'll get the ten of the question.
And also, given that we've just forked out twenty-four million for a building, I'm just hoping that they won't say, find the money yourselves. So, Kate, if I could have an answer to that question?
Councillor James, thank you, thank you for your question. Uh, you note from my diary entries that last Thursday, the CEO and I met with the federal, uh, Labor Member for Franklin, the Honorable Julie Collins, MP, also a cabinet minister. Uh, we, as we always do, uh, put forward a very strong case for Bayview. Uh, Minister Collins is aware of our positioning on this. Um, however, I think it's, without saying too much, I think it's fair to say that this present point in time, it hasn't progressed any further. And you're right, it is a big ask. This is an ambitious project for that part of our city that has been neglected for far too long. Uh, the people of that part of our city deserve first grade sporting infrastructure. There is, as you know, from the work that we've done, uh, a need for it, uh, there's a demand for it. Um, but, uh, it, and it is a case of built, and they will come. I'm very confident of that. But, um, getting the money at the moment has proved, uh, somewhat challenging. So I hope that goes some way to provide an answer. Anything else, councillor James?
Uh, yes, indeed. On page, and I'll get that page right this time, thank you. Page eight, uh, the budget launched, um, and some key projects were in fact, uh, spilt out. But my, uh, question is in relation to Melana and Beach Road intersection upgrade for six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Um, is there any indication as to when work will proceed?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr Graham?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor. I don't have any, um, timing to hand, but I'll, um, inquire with my offices and, and inform council.
Thank you very much. Councillor James?
Following you. My, my question is in relation to the allowances and entitlements of the councillors. Um, and in particular, there, there is a tendency for an upward trend in payment of council allowances. Uh, uh, and that has sort of raised its, um, the point in the recent handout from the first of April twenty-five to the thirtieth of June twenty-five. So there appears to be an upward trend in the, in the payment or requests for allowances for our colleagues. Is there, um, given that there is that trend, have we made any allocation for additional funding in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
Uh, well, councillor James, you're aware that we have. You might recall budgetary discussions that we had as part of that process. Uh, because in effect, and I'll last minute, Mr Mulder will jump in here in a moment. But, um, we actually meet the criteria of being, because of our size, uh, yeah, a hundred and five million dollar operating budget, sixty-four thousand people. We meet the criteria, the same as City of Hobart and the City of Long System. So there has been a budget allocation to put us on equal footing, uh, with those, um, category one councils. So that would see obviously an uptick in, um, councillor, deputy mayor and mayoral allowances. I think you might be referring to other areas here. Um, but the staff have a very good feel for, um, uh, yeah, what, what is likely to occur. Now, some of it is crystal ball gazing, absolutely. But, um, it is something that is policed, um, for want of a better word. It is reviewed regularly by Miss Ellis and the CEO. Uh, and if there is any areas of concern, uh, I'm consulted on it and I'll talk with a colleague. Um, yeah, people should not be disadvantaged in any way, shape or form. And as you know, under the act, there are key areas that, that, that councillors are covered for. Uh, travelling allowance being one, IT, uh, childcare, et cetera, in order to do their job. So no one should be in any way, shape or form disadvantaged. Someone might live at Opossum Bay, uh, yeah, and then have to travel to another end of the city, et cetera, on a regular basis. So, um, the short answer is, yes, it is a part of the budgeting process. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and perhaps through you, uh, Mr Mayor, to our chief financial officer.
Sure, take a sec, thank you. Miss Mulder, would you like to add anything at all?
Um, no, through you, Mayor. I think you covered it well.
Thank you, Miss Mulder. Councillor James, anything else? No, all right. Anything else on this item, colleagues? Uh, councillor, uh, Walker, please.
Um, thank you. I have a query, um, page thirty-one is deliver the fitness in the park programme and it goes through, uh, sort of a briefing which we have seen many times over. There was some discussion about, um, participant contribution through the budgeting process. I don't know if that ended up anywhere, but I'm just, uh, wanting to confirm whether or not there has been a move to some form of participant contribution for funding? Or is it still wholeless, bolus, rate-part funded for participants?
Uh, Miss Mulder? Uh, Miss Coburn, thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your question. Um, my understanding is that the intention is for a gold calling donation to be trialled throughout this year with the new, um, contractor to see how much that, um, brings in from the community. We don't wish to disadvantage members of the community who have limited access to pay.
Thank you, Miss Coburn. Councillor Walker?
Yes, thank you. I know we do actually target, uh, disadvantaged communities with other, um, exercise programme that, uh, we fund. Um, so I guess they're the question sides of it, um, which gives me still some time to be talking commentary-wise. Um, I think one of the reasons why the query came up from, is from, uh, one of my colleagues, Mayor, uh, around the Bayside project is the fact that, um, again, and I, I don't wish this to come across as nitpicking because I think the calibre of, of the way the document is presented is, is, is quite fine. But I suspect somebody reading, um, the item on Bay, both the two items on Bayview College, um, could quite reasonably, uh, come to the, um, conclusion that council is moving ahead and funding this. Um, when in fact, when we discussed the business case, if you like, the air of pessimism was something that we needed to, or some of, strongly we needed to input into this, that whilst this is a fantastic project, this is not, this, this sits on a shelf until another form of funding from another jurisdiction comes in. And I feel that perhaps it's, it hasn't sort of been overtly highlighted in this project. Now, that's my interpretation and we're all entitled to interpretations, if you like. So, um, I could go through some other questions, but I, I might just leave it be.
Councillor Walker, thank you. Uh, it's observation well made. And I think it's a case that we're a lot closer to it than most. But, um, it's only something that Miss Wicks and her team will take on board for, for future quarterly reports. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to raise an item or discuss the quarterly report? All right, there being none? Uh, councillor Kennedy, write a reply, please. No, I put the motion and that is that the, um, quarterly report to thirty June two thousand twenty-five be received. All those in favour? National unanimous, thank you very much. Sorry, sorry, big pardon, sorry. Can I put that again? I put my glasses on. All those in favour? All right. Those against? So councillor Walker has abstained. Thank you. So moved. All right, moving now on to, um, item nine, uh, motions on notice. Uh, nine point one, uh, councillor Mulder, do you have a seconder? Councillor James, thank you, councillor Mulder. The floor is yours.
And thank you for the, uh, people rushing up to second this. It's important to note that stage three of the Clarence Recycled Water Scheme seems to have fallen off the agenda. Whenever the issue is raised, like I did last week, uh, at the last council meeting, the response comes back, oh, we're in negotiations with the irrigators in the Coal River Valley to try to take the surplus water, um, which is now being, uh, um, pumped into the Duvent as class B water or will soon be as class B water into the Duvent River. Whereas a proper re-recycling scheme actually will take it up into detention ponds and detention basins. And that creates wetland reserves. I think, um, the, the, uh, United Nations have actually listed, uh, the wet, the Werribee Sewage Treatment Plant and the settlement ponds there as a, um, as a world standard, um, um, Ramsar wetlands reserve. And it's actually turning class B water from the entire city of Melbourne into class A water, which feeds that wetland and which, uh, i- is, is, is now a birdlife paradise. That's the kind of use that we need, and that's the kind of use that was envisaged for the Coal River Scheme. There's, and the Coal River Scheme is by far, um, the, the biggest. But there are fourteen similar reserves throughout Tasmania. And if you're really going to recycle and reuse and do the environmental thing, we need these basins to be part of the solution and that those basins end up putting out class A water back into our river systems. At the moment, because stage three hasn't been built, this water is being pumped up the Coal River Valley. But it's only going to the sta- size of the dams that the irrigators have on their property. The rest of it makes its way to the top of Tunnel Hill and is pushed as class B water into Borilla Bay. Now, Borilla Bay is not exactly known for its water flow and its, and its, um, um, capacity to, uh, you know, to, to, to get rid of water. We would be much better off trailing it back into the Duvent River and discharging it there. Because there is no way that the Coal River Valley Irrigators will ever get to the point where they can take all the water that Clarence is producing, let alone the greater city of Hobart is producing. So that's why we need these detention basins. And I fear that this, this idea keeps slipping off the, off the radar. And I've raised it a few times and people give it lip service, but nowhere in any of these projects do we get, this is a world-class thing. The City of Logan in, um, in Queensland recently have, have, have turned their class B water, instead of discharging it into the river systems, they are now putting it into wetlands where they are using algae to actually clean the water. And then they are taking that algae and they are harvesting it out of their ponds and they are ploughing it into the clapped-out soils in the higher regions in their detention basins. And that's exactly what the people in Colebrook need. Because of the soils up there are desperately short of the kind of humours that we would do. This would be a great major win. So just saying, oh, no, we're going to pl- pump class B water up into the Coal River Valley. And what, when what's not being used, which is the bulk of it, is going to be discharged into Borilla Bay where we actually have an oyster leases. Um, those are the issues that we need to get up. We need to get really strategic about some of this stuff and step up to the plate and start to deal with this problem that, um, that we are doing. So the simple solutions, no, maybe we don't sell it to farmers. Maybe we just put it into the river and we put class A water down and we allow people to extract it and reuse it on their land as they need be. So that's the basis of this motion is to try to elevate. This is a signature project, one that should be replicated throughout the state, by the way. Uh, uh, replicate and to elevate it back in to the strategic priorities rather than, uh, what we get now is, let's just upgrade it to this level and let's just do this project. And, and there are many projects that need doing. And I think about the seuring of Lordedale, the seuring of Seven Mile Beach, where we are now finding that we put water into these suburbs, but we don't take water out. And it's not only sewage, it's stormwater as, as, as we're getting more of these events.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Councillor James?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, as I mentioned in a debate previously, any idea that may result in some means for discussion and be able to change the course of a particular direction in which, um, we may be heading in a, I support any idea that may have some grounds for further consultation. I'll say that's it.
Uh, councillor Warren, thank you. Thank you, councillor James.
Mayor, I commend councillor Mulder on his passion for this project, which is obviously very worthy. Um, I question though, the value, and perhaps councillor Mulder could have addressed this in his reply, of moving a motion that, I, I'm not a big fan of urging other government entities how to do their business. Um, I don't think we would be very happy if Tas Water contacted us and asked us to rearrange our strategic plan, um, based on their priorities. Um, so I don't think it's our role to urge, to tell other government entities how to do their job. But I also don't think it would be very effective. Um, so there, there was a passion for these sorts of motions in the last term of council, uh, writing to State Development and various other, um, government bodies telling, urging them to do this, that and the other, and it had absolutely no effect. Uh, we occasionally get a letter back saying, thank you for your advice, full stop, and, and nothing happened. So, um, while I, again, I commend the project, I think it's a worthy project. I'm not sure that the motion is valuable. Um, I have no objection to it, but I just don't know what it's going to achieve. So, um, I'm on the fence.
Any other colleagues? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. And through you, I might just try and nudge councillor Warren off the fence. Um, and, and one of the ways I might do so is to say, I think that what you've put up about councils telling other instrumentalities and things what to do is absolutely legitimate and meritorious matter. The, the nudge would come around the fact that, um, most of these were assets that we once owned and we are now still the largest shareholder in an entity. And, um, if I owned eleven percent of Woolworths, uh, I would possibly have a voice on the board table and I would probably be able to, um, make some influence. Uh, I don't. Um, so I think it is a reasonable thing to do. The other point I would make, or another point I would make, is that, um, this is a low-cost endeavour for council to undertake. Um, chalk it up to ninety minutes of staff time, maybe it's more, but it's, 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 it's a little bit of staff time is, is the cost. Uh, the email we send is effectively free. Uh, the other bit I would, I, I, I think the other thing that comes from this is the opportunity for the present term of council to reflect on, uh, the stewardship of previous terms. They haven't got it right on everything for certain. They shouldn't have sold the waste transfer site for one, but they were right to close down the tip. In the case of water, water, um, reuse scheme, that was a wonderful amount of foresight that was pushed by this council and achieved and has been transformative for the Coal River Valley. So, um, as I said, we, we are the biggest shareholder of this entity. And as the biggest shareholder, I don't think it hurts to, to raise this matter.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Mulder for bringing forward this motion. Uh, like councillor Warren, I also to, you know, struggled a little bit with being on the fence around, um, not only whether it would be effective or not, or appropriate or not, I, I'm never, as a principal position- As a principal position, I generally never have an issue with asking or inquiring. I think if you don't ask, you don't know. So that's not particularly what troubles me. I think there is quite a range of issues in the background at play here. Yes, council's a key stakeholder in the entity. There are other considerations around tas irrigation as an entity, what their role is in these sorts of issues moving forward. I might have benefited from actually hearing from about the scheme by way of briefing, inviting the entity to come in and talk with us or hear from us. I think that might have been a worthwhile exercise. I still think it might be. That's perhaps another discussion for another day. I think that it would be perhaps a good idea for council to engage on this particular reuse water scheme in terms of how it's progressing and our interest in it. But do I think this hurts anything? Probably not. I'm not sure how effective it would be, but I'm not going to oppose it at this stage. But there are lots of other things I think that we could be considering more broadly and I'll give some consideration to that out of session to see whether or not it is worthwhile that we perhaps start to look at these things in a different way and engage offline in respect of these sorts of matters. But I thank councillor Mulder for bringing the motion forward in any event.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to enter the debate at this time?
Well, before I call on councillor Mulder for his reply, I will now enter the debate as a councillor in knowledge of mayor. While in principle I agree with the premise of the motion, that reuse water should be used for irrigation purposes, the motion as it stands, focusing on construction of a new dam, is, in my view, somewhat misdirected. TasWater's mandate is to supply potable water, treat sewage and supply recycled water. It should not be building large reuse water dams. Colleagues, what we're dealing with here is an historical anomaly. Tasmanian irrigation is legislated and experienced in delivering large-scale irrigation storage like the proposed Headwaters Dam. In my view, we should be asking whether this irrigation infrastructure most properly resides with Tasmanian tas irrigation rather than tas water. As I said, I agree with the broad premise of the motion. Irrigation water is being topped up with perfectly good drinking water, which is, I'm sure we can all agree, ridiculous and expensive. Usable recycled water from our sewage treatment plants is wasted into the Durrant and other waterways due to a lack of targeted irrigation infrastructure. This is costing the community. The community pays for potable water treatment, then part of that water ends up in our crops. And this is a classic fit-for-purpose mismatch. In my view, we should be having a statewide conversation about reuse water. That whether Grade A or Grade B as a solution that maximizes recycled water reuse and avoids unnecessary reliance on potable supply as the state's irrigation infrastructure strategy. Colleagues, I would prefer that this motion should instead urge the state government, Tasmanian irrigation and tas water to prioritise reuse water infrastructure to eliminate the use of potable water for irrigation purposes. Now I call on councillor Mulder for his write-up reply, please.
And I'll start by correcting that this motion is not about using recycled water for irrigation purposes. This is about recycling water from Class A to Class B. The problem is, and now may I say, stage three isn't a Mulder thought bubble added on to the Clarence reuse Walker scheme. Stage three was always part of it. It was always going to be that way. And but we never got round. And one of the big blockers to it was the time that TasWater took over the water supply. And they were actually, there was a lot of argy-bargy going on at the time about whether they would take the reuse scheme over. And in the end, it was agreed that they should because they were going to leave the reuse scheme to the councils and just simply take it from there. So I'm really going to say that they did take it over. And when they took it over, they also took stage three. And it's not we're arguing about to another government agency. We own TasWater. TasWater has come out, and as the CEO points out, that they are actually in the process of undertaking consultation for its next list of pricing and projects priorities. And all we're doing is saying to them, you know, we are not yelling at them from in an empty room. We are simply saying to them, as part of your consultation, can you please reexamine and prioritise this stage three development? Because to sum it up as, oh, you know, it should all be used for irrigation, the supply of reuse water far exceeds and will forever and today that required for irrigation. So we've got to do something with this surplus water. And my argument is that we need to get up to some world standards. We need to get a hundred percent of turning this water back into good potable water. And even if it just flushes down the river, that won't hurt us anything. But we need to actually stop discharging this Class B water into our waterways, particularly the ones that aren't flushing. So I commend this motion and I'm not asking, as I said, all we're asking is for them, as part of their request for consultation, that they give some consideration to achieving their own stated aim of turning all wastewater into one hundred percent environmentally sound water.
Thank you councillor Mulder. I'll put the motion setting of a name, and that is that Clarence City Council urges TasWater to complete stage three of the Clarence reuse water scheme by constructing a dam in the headwaters of the Coal River. All those in favour? Those against? Abstained? Deputy Mayor's abstained, that's carried, thank you. Moving now on to nine point two. Councillor Ritchie, is there a second? Councillor Goohan, thank you. Councillor Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I have put forward a motion to council that is, at its heart, I believe, all about due diligence surrounding the future of what we'd all agree is a very important community asset in Belrevival. The motion is, though, not about sending a message that Belrevival is for sale or that there's any type of a fait accompli about its future. It is, in fact, providing a clear indication that as councillors, we acknowledge the history and the importance of Belrevival to the local community and making it patently clear that we will embark upon a process to undertake all necessary due diligence in consideration of its future. And I believe that now is the right time, it's imperative, that we commence this process because whether we like it or not, Stadiums Tasmania have expressed an interest in acquiring Belrevival and we've seen its anchor tenant in Cricket Tasmania announce their plans to move from Belrevival to a new state-of-the-art cricket centre of excellence at Seven Mile Beach. So planning around these types of interests is as important as it has ever been. Council is entrusted, as we all know, with managing Belrevival and indeed all public land and facilities under our custodianship for the benefit of the community. This means that, you know, ensuring the land and facilities are used for public purposes, properly maintained and responsibly managed. And this involves, you know, adhering to the relevant legislation, managing risks and considering community needs when making decisions about the future of public land and facilities. Now, I appreciate that what is meant by the best interests of the community or the benefit of the community may mean different things to different people, but that's why it's so vitally important that the recommended process of due diligence is undertaken. Because in considering the future of Belrevival, Ninja Stadium as it's currently known, it is necessary for the council to examine these key aspects that include assessing the asset's value, considering community impact, legal and procedural compliance and financial implications and so on. The purpose of this motion is to ensure an appropriate process is established to better inform council and the community and to facilitate a thorough analysis of the challenges, risks and opportunities that exist for Belrevival and to make recommendations ultimately on the future directions which enable the stadium to continue to act as an important community asset for our community. So I seek colleague support in what I think is a sensible, sufficiently robust and flexible motion that is appropriate, has been set out in stages in consultation with the officers. And I do thank the CEO for his input on putting together some of those staged approaches to workshops and so on. So I do seek colleagues' support for what I think is not only a very sensible motion, but one that I actually don't think we can afford to not undertake at this time. I seek colleague support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Goohan, please, a second.
Thank you. Call me naive, but my previous experience regarding sporting facilities in the state government was hardly a positive one for myself and our community. Created a great division and you know what they say about fooling me once. When I was reading the Stadiums Tasmania website, I was of great concern where it already lists this Ninja Stadium as one of the properties they may assume responsibility for. So when councillor Ritchie speaks about a fait accompli, it just concerns me that some may consider it a fait accompli. So I thank the deputy mayor for bringing this motion forward to ensure that due diligence is done in this space and I seek my colleague's support.
Thank you councillor Goohan. Any other colleagues wishing to enter the debate? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just concerned that this may be a bit premature. We had a very in-depth discussion at the workshop a week or two ago and I was impressed by the CEO of Stadiums Tasmania, where he basically put everything on the line and said yes, that, and let's call it the Belrevival because we've called it that from day one, a lot of us anyway. And by going through all these different aspects of obtaining current valuation of the oval and evaluation of Belrevival's condition, subject to the outcomes of one and two above, subject to the outcomes of findings of one, two and three above, assess Belrevival's value to current tenants, facility owners and the broader community and so on. Provide a proposal for the conduct of appropriate community consultation. So, look, it just goes on and on and on. And at this stage, my understanding, and when we had the discussion with the CEO of Stadiums, excuse me, Tasmania, a week or two ago, it just seemed to me this is the early stages and they can come back to us and have a roundtable discussion with us. There are other elements of this in the mix as well. There's Cricket Tasmania and they have a lease on the site for, I think, forty-five years. I think that's still current. Well, that is in that situation. There has been discussions from the, one of the key board members of Cricket Tasmania saying that they are going to stay there for the time being and so on. And so there's nothing there that really has been described as a fait accompli with the proposal that Cricket Tasmania wants to set up its high-performance centre at Seven Mile Beach. So even though there are a lot of issues here that seem to me to be, at this stage, inappropriate for us to really make a decision on, I would like us to at least tread water on this until such time as Stadiums Tasmania comes back to us. And they said they would, they were frank and open in their discussions with us. And I think this just makes it more confusing to actually throw this into the mix when there's a lot of extra effort and time that needs to be done. And I know that the CEO and his chief financial officer, who were present at our last workshop, said that. And therefore, at this stage, I will not support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Belrevival belongs to the people of Clarence and those were the golden days when it was a community oval and hosted community sporting events. Since it became an arena or a stadium, it's been dogged with difficult issues for the community that surrounds that area. Any big events cause parking, traffic issues, right back to Rosney Hill, antisocial behaviour, problems with lights, litter and so on. So my concern in hearing the proposal for the future of this oval is that if Stadiums Tasmania take it over, then it would be important for them to make it profitable. And that sounds, and this was actually mentioned in our briefing, more monster truck events. Now, what Belrev does not need is more monster truck events. This was never the right place to have an arena or a stadium holding those sorts of activities. So I asked a question as to whether there would be consultation with the community. I didn't really get a satisfactory response. It was more along the lines of, well, if you can provide us with the name of a community group that we could talk to. Yeah, so there are a lot of concerns around the future of this. I commend the deputy mayor for bringing this motion and giving us the opportunity to find out what other options might be available and to be in full possession of the facts regarding the value and the potential of this site that would be of benefit to the community rather than a place to hold more monster truck events. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Warren. Councillor Mulder, please.
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion actually calls for this council to start entering into negotiations, into consultations. We've spent, and I echo all the remarks that councillor Warren has made, and we can spend more money. I mean, we know, we get the complaints when they have a monster truck event, when they have a major concert there, when they switch the lights on, when the noise is too loud, when they propose building towers, when they propose building the buildings. Those things, by the way, basically were built by taxpayers' money. And we as this council actually pay Cricket five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's ten thousand dollars week in, week out to manage their own things. And if, and it seems, I can, and if Cricket Australia want to move in there, let them do the consultation. Let them do their consultation when they come up with a great plan of, you know, of moving in there. Let them feel the heat directly from the community about their proposals. And they're open about, oh, we need to increase the entertainment value of this, not just AFL women's games, but the entertainment value. So that's bringing in more people, you know? They need to look at why they didn't, why, you know, we didn't have this as the stadium in the first place, the Mac One Stadium, A, because of the traffic problems, because it's stuck in the middle of a community. They don't want this noise, they don't want this level. I would like to see it returned to the clubs. All I can say is that are we going to now hand this over to Cricket, over to Stadiums Tasmania? Are we now going to say, well, and we'll keep paying the five hundred thousand dollars to maintain the cricket pits so that cricket can play their ovals? Or are they going to take those over? Or are they going to give us one dollar, like they did for York Park, for this community asset, to dump it into our communities? I understand the need, we would like to get that message out there. We would like Cricket, we would like Stadiums Tasmania to actually get the feel for what the community want to do with their oval, and it is Belrevival. Well, then let them find it out. We have spent far too much money on major corporations who are running international events and making bill cricket and community football clubs and other sports that could be using those facilities have basically been kicked off. You know, we've got a Clarence football team who are going into the finals who can't train or play on these ovals at these stages. So really, you know, if Tasmanian stadiums- So really, you know, if Tasmanian stadiums are hell-bent on taking this over, then let them, but let them come up and let them consult with the community, because we've spent far too much money already on this particular venue, and it ought to be returned to community ownership. So I, I understand the sentiment, where we're going from, but let Tasmanian, Stadiums Tasmania find out for themselves, and London to a brick is they will take no notice of it anyway. So I don't, I don't support spending any more money consulting with the public, because we all sat around this table through many, many council iterations, and we know what the resident, local residents think, and the local sporting clubs think about Big Brother taking our state, our cricket ground and footy ground.
Any other colleagues wish to make a contribution? councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't exactly clear where councillor Mulder was going with that, whether he was saying, yes, we should let Stadiums Tasmania take it over and let them wear the program for whatever they just decide to do with it and all the community complaints, or whether he was saying, no, we should, we should defend community ownership of this asset. I, my understanding is that the motion is all about doing the work to investigate, you know, what the options and the outcomes are so that we can decide, you know, which of those is best for the community. We, we obviously are not going to accept as a fait accompli that, you know, the best thing for us to do from a council perspective is hand over Ninja Stadium or Belrevival to Stadiums Tasmania. But we need to, we need to balance all those considerations, so looking at the questions of, well, what is the financial cost to council, what is the financial benefit to council, and then what is the, what is the community benefit? What are the, what are the potential uses and what are the considerations for, you know, the, the community that uses that asset, but also the community that surrounds that asset and the impacts that it has on them potentially? You know, we've got to weigh up all those considerations, and that's what I understand the deputy mayor's motion is, is looking at doing, investigating these issues further, consulting with the community, you know, finding out, you know, the information that we need to, to balance all these things, to weigh them up, to make that assessment, to make that, that judgment. Not just about the decision of, do we accept transferring ownership to Stadiums Tasmania? But if we do, on what terms do we do it? What do we think is a fair price in terms of what we get back for, for giving up that asset to Stadiums Tasmania? Yeah, it, it needs, it needs that work to determine not, not just the question of whether we accept that transfer, but what is a fair price for that transfer? And whether that's a, an immediate capital price or some kind of ongoing commitment from them? And also what are the guardrails that we can put around that? You know, or, or do we, or do we lose control of that asset? And what happens to the community around there? And what happens to the sporting clubs that we would like to see benefit from it, you know, if, if they do take it over? There's a lot of unanswered questions there, and, and, you know, I, I support the motion because it is about seeking to answer those questions as part of that process of negotiating the Stadiums Tasmania.
Thank you councillor Hume. councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you Mayor. Sometimes an item can come up on a council meeting and give one cause to think. Sometimes you can get caused to feel gaslit. Occasionally you can feel like you're in the Truman Show. When it comes to this motion, I think the intent is, I don't impugn the intent in any way, shape or form, but I look at point B, which is not point B, it's point B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J effectively with all the sub-points, and it does feel overly prescriptive. And it is, I think, somewhat defensive rather than collaborative in intent. And I made my earlier remark, because you know what I think would be a really good way forward? That would be if council would come together with the AFL, Cricket Tasmania, state growth, and look at future utilization of the, of the then Blundstone Arena, and whether or not it could incorporate a high-performance centre. That motion was a year ago, and that motion was rejected by this council, and that motion, whilst it mentioned the word high-performance centre, wasn't at all explicit about that as its only intent. It was to say, you sit down with the wider parties and talk the long-term future, and when you have all those things in place, then you try and work a way forward. And I do think the best thing for this site would have been, for it to have been the high-performance centre, I think it could have happened. I think a council that wasn't, that was in no ways weak, servile or ingratiating towards a major sporting league would have been able to say, forget the new stadium smell, this is the best location going. This would be so attractive to come across on a ferry with a prospective player, this has a beach out the front, naming any other high-performance centre that can, and yes, we'll, we'll work through the secondary oval. Council at that time, as I said, a bit over a year ago, could not even come to just have a discussion about the future. I feel that this approach is, is not collaborative, it's more, more defensive, and I don't think it's going to get the best end result for rate payers, for sporting utilization, and then pulling back one more for the state. We are a small, we are, you know, a very small jurisdiction, easily the smallest state, and by the way the ACT is growing, they may overtake our population before too long as well. So we do have to try and work together when it comes to sporting infrastructure. So as I said, I don't impugn the intent, I find it a little bit exasperating given what this council rejected over barely a year ago, and because of the prescriptive nature, I don't feel comfortable to support.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to enter the debate? Okay, well colleagues, before I call on the deputy mayor for her right of reply, I'll now enter the debate as a councillor and not as your mayor. While in principle I'm supportive of this motion, I know this work would take place whether this motion was brought forward tonight or not. I am extraordinarily proud of this council. The city of Clarence is an exceedingly well-run and highly professional organisation, and irrespective of this motion, please be assured, this work would have been done. The future of Belrevival is a big decision, and it is appropriate and imperative that we undertake our due diligence. As we know, our role is to act always, always, in the best interests of our community as a whole. While there is still no clear timeframe from Stadiums Tasmania on whether or when the acquisition will commence, with only Belrevival and My State Bank Arena yet to go, it makes practical sense for the due diligence work to begin soon. And I look forward to engaging with our community and seeking their input once the due diligence processes have been completed. And colleagues, as we all know, this is a big decision which could have, as you've touched on this evening, great implications for council, current user groups and for our community. I now call on the deputy mayor for her right of reply. thank you councillor Ritchie.
Thank you Mr Mayor, and you're exactly right in your comments that we couldn't bury our head in the sands, because this was going to come regardless. So as soon as we had, for some of us who, you know, first time on council, and the first time meeting with representatives from Stadiums Tasmania, the first visit we've had from them. So naturally, my instinct was to send a very clear message that we've heard you, we, I, I see what they have on their website, but the response is, we'll go about our due diligence, thank you very much, we appreciate your position, but we as a council will go about our due diligence appropriately, and so we are prepared. I note their timeline, they mentioned about the acquisition of My State Bank Arena is late this year or early next year, and I wouldn't be surprised if the expectation around Belrevival is not far beyond, or around that time. I also noted that they indicated they wouldn't be doing any consultation in their presentation. My view is, personally, that if we get to that stage throughout, through this process, should this motion succeed, then we ought to invite them to actually put some funds towards the carry-out of some of this work that we will need to do, particularly in response to their level of interest, and that they should be prepared to put some funds towards it, that would be not an unreasonable request. But I would never hand over the control of the consultation process to the party that wants to acquire the asset, because I would then spend the rest of the time having concern about the integrity of the consultation process, and I wouldn't feel that that's of, of value to anybody. So just making those notes in relation to the issues raised around consultation and timing, I think it would be foolhardy not to embark upon what is a sensible process. I do want to point out though, just to respond to councillor Walker, that this is not, you know, this, I've made this motion deliberately open-ended, it talks about, you know, not limited to, this is a starting place. I mean, we don't know where things are going to go when we have our workshops and the staff bring relevant information to us, and that's deliberate, because I wanted all of my colleagues to have a chance to be able to continue to build on wherever this continues to go. So I will hope, you know, love to look forward to other councillors bringing things through the process should this motion succeed, and like others, I mean, I have my private views, probably they align very closely with councillor Mulder's and councillor Warren. I'm concerned about the Clarence Footy Club, the people that have been there forever. I want to have, you know, have strong engagement with those organisations, because they matter to me very deeply, as does the future of this oval. So while some people have described it as defensive, I don't see it that way, I think it's appropriate, and, and I think we have a responsibility to undertake this work for, on behalf of our community, and I urge colleagues to support the motion.
Thank you deputy mayor, I'll put the motion standing in the deputy mayor's name. All those in favour? Those against? So carry. Thank you colleagues, moving now on to item 10, councillors' question time. There were no questions on notice, 10.3 answers to questions without notice previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. Questions without notice, are there any questions from the floor starting this evening with the deputy mayor?
No, thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Mulder. councillor Hunter, and welcome back again. councillor Hume.
Only one.
We were going for a clean sweep, we realised.
Only one question tonight. So it was July twenty twenty-three when Minister Yench wrote to the CEO in response to my motion on restrictive covenants that restricted, you know, people of particular financial circumstances from owning living-in properties, or restricted them from being public housing. You know, it was a clear case of discrimination against people based on their, their financial circumstances. I did follow up with a question in March, I understand the CEO was going to get in touch with the gap, I can't remember if we heard back about that, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering where it's at.
Thank you, sorry, sorry, we'll ask the question, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, another question through you Mayor. I'm going to need to follow up on that, I don't actually recall the question in March, so it may have slipped by me, or I may be, maybe I was on leave, I'm not sure. But I'll take it on notice and follow up.
Thank you councillor Hume. councillor James.
Firstly, may we have an update on the boulevard project and when the revised development application will be presented to council?
So, yeah, would you like that one or Mr Ma? Mr Ma, please.
Through you Mayor, thank you councillor James for the question. Simple answer, we don't know.
Thank you.
We've asked, had a meeting with them, asked them to make application, provide some more documentation following our workshop, to date that hasn't happened.
Thank you Mr Ma. Another question councillor James?
In response to your answer to me at the recent council meeting when you said, and it's in relation to the election of the management committee, you said, I sought advice as the delegate for this council and exercised a longstanding convention and voted accordingly. Now, it's my understanding that the longstanding convention has been that the delegate who was voting in this particular case followed council's decision and actually voted in accordance with council's decision.
No, councillor James, so let me be very clear on this. Council nominated you, you're a nominated candidate, I then exercised the right to make a determination with the candidates put in front of me. Just because you're nominated, he doesn't mean you necessarily get the vote. So let me be very clear on that, and I sought advice from my predecessor, sought advice from the CEO. So that there be no doubt councillor James, that everything was, was above board. You were nominated by this council, I was not directed to vote for you by this council. councillor Walker, any questions?
Thank you. First question is in relation to our good friends, and some might even say our moral betters, the Hobart City Council, who own real estate.
So sorry, did you just call them moral betters?
Some would call them, some would call them moral betters, yeah.
Misheard you.
Some. They currently own property in the municipality of Clarence and operate and undertake enterprises in the municipality. My question is, are they currently paying rates? And should they not be, why not? And furthermore, what quantum of funding would we be foregoing on a normal rating basis if that is the case?
Thank you councillor Walker. Miss Ma, does the city of Hobart pay rates for their properties here in the great city of Clarence?
Through you Mayor, I believe so, but I will take that on notice in relation to the rest of your questions.
I think the next part of the question is, is it enough? But anyway.
Yes.
councillor Walker.
Thank you.
Thank you for your response.
Second point is in relation to the motion successfully moved by Alderman Hume a couple of council meetings ago, relating to a FOIA request for the information around the high-performance centre. I imagine that feeding information request is in process. One of the elements of that motion approved was us publishing our correspondence for a defined period of time. I'm wondering if that is now up on our website or anywhere yet, or if there's a timeline for it.
Thank you. thank you councillor James. So, yeah.
Sorry councillor Walker, can you just repeat the end of that question?
Yeah, so part of councillor Hume's motion was amended, that included us tabling our correspondence in relation to the high-performance centre, and we defined, defined in the motion was the period of time for the correspondence, and I'm just wondering if that has now been published yet or put up online.
I'll have to take that on notice unless Miss Shay has any view on that.
Miss Shay.
Yeah, I have a question, I assume you're referring to the right information application. I expect that decision in the next week or so.
Once we're out of caretaker mode, is it?
Um, I think it's a question about the extension of time from council to the application on Thursday, and that time will expire on Thursday this week.
Thank you Miss Shay, councillor James.
Thank you for that. The, the information I was saying was solely the correspondence that was generated by council and forwarded on, so the motion is quite explicit in what was being asked to be published and, and the period of timeline for, for those materials.
Can we come back to you, the CEO will come back to you.
Thank you.
councillor Walker, thank you. councillor Going.
Whilst I'm at this table, there'll never be a clear sweep with questions, just, just putting that out there. Last meeting I asked in regards to the water quality report for the Lordheaddale Canal, the answer as was taken on notice was that water quality was presented to council on the twenty-fifth of August workshop, followed by an update on the community of the council's Your Say page. Does the update include the water report in full? And if not, will it be available through a right information either to council or whoever conducted the water quality report?
Thank you. Mr Graham?
I think it's best for the workshop next week, we'll be providing council with an update on where we are with the negotiations with Crown on the lease of the area and the results that we've received. As we lease the, we're writing to Crown following the, the recent meeting with the CEO and officers. Crown haven't seen the water quality report, and we lease it from them, so it's appropriate that they actually receive a copy of the report as well. There's a number of complexities with this, so one... There's a number of complexities with this, so once we've informed council of all these complexities at the workshop next week, we'll be in a position on how we can release the, and what information we can release to the public at that time.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Goohan.
I've initially put in a request around a coastal activity reserve plan in twenty twenty-four, and I followed up this week. But I was provided that the information, that the plans are for review, however, owing to priorities with several other reserve management plans needing updating or developing, a date has not been set for the review. The plan that I'm talking about is the Mordama Bay Coastal Reserve Activity Plan, which features quite heavily in the coastal access strategy, whatever that one was. And so the Mordama Bay one was twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Can I just seek clarification on how many of these plans are currently due or overdue for an upgrade?
Thank you councillor Goohan, Mr Graham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll certainly have to take that one on notice to indicate the number of reserve activity plans we're reviewing.
Thank you very much. Councillor Warren? Councillor Kennedy? All right, well, thank you colleagues, I note that I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting, thank you, move councillor Warren. Second to councillor Goohan, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Thank you. Well, thank you to those members of the public who attended this in person this evening, and those joining us via the live stream at home. See you again in three weeks' time, enjoy your evening, please enter the livestream.